...Commission. At 6 o'clock, I'm going to start with a roll call of our Planning Commission members. Howard Tripp.
Here.
Abby Dahlman.
Here.
Bryce Erlich.
Here.
And Lippi Bolivia.
Here.
And County Commissioners. Do I have Commissioner Mudge? Commissioner Marcella? Or Commissioner Fiedler? We did just get a text from a few people that are having a hard time, so that could be that. We'll come back there. We have no changes or additions to the agenda. I'm going to start with a quick welcome. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I always appreciate people showing up and being able to do the virtual piece of it. The virtual piece is actually why we're here tonight. I want to make sure that we don't cloud the waters too much. This is a Lake County zoning ordinance. This is not a city ordinance. Normally, any meetings that happen in here are for the city, and we handle all of our county meetings over at the county building. But the city has their stuff together with this Zoom situation, so this is why we're here tonight. So this is not city, this is county. If there's any questions after this meeting, or any contact you'd like to make, please reach out to one of us, or Anne over at the Building Department. Tonight, we are putting together this town hall meeting for the Backcountry Zoning District that we've all been working on for quite some time. The purpose of tonight's meeting is really to do a Q&amp;A session, answer a lot of questions that people may have, really try to get the information about the zoning district out there tonight, and then receive any input of things that maybe we haven't considered, things that changes that we may want to consider to the code before we go to public hearing. The public hearing process is set for January 10th.
10th.
That's the night where it's the "I strongly agree with this," or "I strongly oppose this." That's the night for that. Tonight isn't really that night. Tonight is more of a night of, hey, let's learn about what this Backcountry zoning district is. These are some things we want you guys to consider when trying to propose this zone district in January, and answer any questions you guys can have. So I wanted to just kind of lay that out there first, to kind of let you know how tonight will go. What I'm going to start with is I'm going to let Anne do a nice little intro for us as to how we got to backcountry zoning, what it is, what we're trying to do, what it is and what it isn't. Some really big things to know is there are lots of issues with any code in any county, and this doesn't solve all of them. This will just, in our eyes, hopefully make things better, and on the path of that. It may not make every single person in the community happy, but we're hoping that it makes the majority happy. So that's the goal tonight. I will go ahead with that and turn it over to Anne to start her presentation.
Good evening, everyone. So, as Heather said, I'm just going to kind of talk about the genesis of this work, which actually started over a decade ago, long before I was at the county. But there are some members of our County Commission that remember that work when it first began. And basically, we have the same goals in mind now that we did when this work started, and that's basically preserving the natural environment. Oh, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
It's a little trouble back here.
Okay. So, basically, that's preserving the natural environment and protecting the rural mountain lifestyle that our community holds dear. The Building and Land Use Department, as well as the Planning Commission and the board annually hear from the public lamenting that they want to be able to use what Howard has always called these recreational mining claims, that they wanted to be able to use them in a way that our code currently doesn't support. They want to have a yurt. They want to have a hunting or fishing cabin. But currently, our code says that if you're going to build anything on one of these claims, then you're going to have to have a minimum of 600 square feet. You're going to have to have an engineered septic system, and you're going to have to have a well. So what we are trying to do is create an opportunity for a use that has never been contemplated. Well, it's been contemplated, but up until now, we haven't been ready to put into fruition. And so that is one of the segments that we're going to talk about tonight. The other is the preservation of these environmentally sensitive areas. That's just another time for us to skip the work. Sorry about that. Under existing code, there's nothing that considers the impact to the environment when you pull a building permit in these areas. Impacts like fire protection, forest health, water, wildlife, life pollution, pollution, and even though these boundaries...
Paul, you need to mute.
Even though these boundaries are typically within national forest areas. The proposal intent is a thoughtful stewardship of the backcountry. It was vetted with the collaboration of many past and present stakeholders, the Forest Service, Lake County Fire Rescue, Red Hill Lake County Fire Rescue, excuse me, Public and Environmental Health, both local and state, the Office of Emergency Management, public works in the Sheriff's Office, or just some of the collaborators that have worked closely with us as we've worked through consideration of adding some uses in these areas. We also researched areas like Summit County, Cape County, and Pitt King County, where we discovered this type of zoning already existed. And in each of them, the intent was to honor areas of environmental sensitivity and minimizing impact. So by design, the goal of this is thoughtful stewardship of land. And so just a little bit about what is backcountry zoning. This proposal is a hybrid between the existing zoning and the new backcountry zoning. And I think mostly what people want to hear is, what does this change? And so the first thing is that you can now build a backcountry under backcountry structure of less than 600 square feet, which does not have to have a well or an engineered septic system. And instead of muting the building code, now it's the zoning code. Single-family homes in the backcountry are still allowed. The only thing that would be changed under this would be a limitation on size, which at this point is a 900-square-foot threshold. The proposal does not allow for short-term rentals. However, you can still apply for a conditional use permit for a group camp or a vacation lodge, similar to the temp mountain hut model. And the last thing, the significant change is that camping will now be allowed. This is something that, under our code, was only allowable if you had five acres or greater, or if you had a primary use established. Then there is a 15-day consecutive day maximum, and no more than 30 days in a six-month period. But camping as a primary use of the property is now something that can be considered as a use for these property owners. And I think now we're just going to go into sharing a map to identify what area is included. And again, as we establish these boundaries, we are only looking at areas that are rural and remote, that have typically seasonal access. And I think Bryce can show us the map of it.
All right. Thank you, Anne. Okay. All right. So this is just a broad overview of the areas that the backcountry zone encompasses. The backcountry zone was carved out of former rural, or sorry, recreational zoning land and ag forestry land. This does not touch any of the industrial mining land, though. And so the basis of this land and the lands that were incorporated into the zone are it's full of, interspersed between public and private lands. So you have a lot of the former mining claims in this area that weren't mined extensively for decades, like we see in the industrial mining area, lands that, as Anne mentioned, and Howard had classified for years as recreational mining claims. And so they were at one point former mining claims, but they were never extensively industrially mined. We can go into the fact that I mentioned that there's a lot of public land at play in here. This kind of demonstrates how these zones are large and encompassing a lot of public land, but also the parcels that were in that.
It incorporates our property.
Pardon?
It covers our cabin.
We need you to...
Their area.
Mr. Glenn, if you could please mute.
So the major areas that you might be familiar with. Now, this didn't touch any subdivisions. So if any piece of land went through the subdivision process, even if it was formerly mining claims or homesteaded, that was excluded because it's under a new regulation and, you know, was kind of put through a process for development at some point in the past. The big areas in question are Mount Zion, spreading over the highway and into some of the stuff that's on the mosquito range on the east side of the county, northeast side. You have these small mining claims in the Home State area, these mining claims in the St. Kevin area, as well as on the south side of Lake Turquoise and the Sugarloaf Mountain area. We have what I call the mosquito flats of the Empire Gulch area as well, spreading down into the Western Pass area. Down here, we have granite and those mining claims. Outside of Twin Lakes Village, up in the hill, Perry Peak area, is also included, as well as all the mining claims in the pretty far backcountry near Independence Pass. If you can see from the first map, though...
Can we get closer on anything?
Sure. We can zoom into certain areas, but just wanted to point out that these areas have very little roads. Most of the roads that are there, there might be historic mining roads, but very few county roads, very few maintained roads, if at all. So that was one consideration, as well as that they just have limited access, and that would be a consideration for any development of them. I'm happy to zoom into certain areas.
Could we look at the Mount Zion 91 corridor?
Yeah.
I'm concerned about the elk habitat and their access to those ravines to the Arkansas River.
So what I'm going to, what I'm going to actually have us do is save some of those questions, because what I'm going to need you to do is come up to the speaker.
Okay.
So that the people on Zoom can hear you.
I just wanted to see if you're here.
Yeah, yeah. We can definitely zoom in.
Yeah, happy to zoom in and look at this map. And this map is available in an interactive way, too, on the website that kind of explains through the zoning. And it'll be there for you guys to look at, you know, through this whole process.
Hope you have a speak.
I think I've really, we're going to, we're going to wait for that just a little bit.
I'm just trying to see.
One more, you know, one, one quick little thing to add to Anne's summary of kind of how we got here.
There's a question from Zoom. I'm sorry if they're asking where the map is found on the website.
Yeah. So if you go to the Lake County Building and Land Use website, on the left-hand side, there's a panel that says "Propose Backcountry Zone." So I'll just guide through so everyone sees it. Propose backcountry zoning. Click on that. There's some information, as well as backcountry zoning map listed about halfway down the page. There's the GIS layered map, which is the interactive one showing the parcels. And then there's also the backcountry county map, which is just that more broad overview.
One of the, one of the main drivers for, you know, continuing the work on this zone district really is that preservation of our hillsides, of our lands that fall within the Forest Service areas, and trying to keep those areas harmonious with Forest Service land and, you know, more recreational in nature. You know, I think in a lot of people's opinions, Summit County did that too late. There's mansions all over hillsides. As the real estate market continues to do what it's doing right now, people with really deep pockets don't mind buying properties up in these areas and saying, "I'll pave the road. I'll pave the road. I'll put in a helicad." And this was a request just a couple weeks ago from somebody looking to buy a group of mining claims. So that development is here, or that desire to start pushing the development into these areas is here. The goal for this proposal, I think, the passion that sits back here to getting this moving forward, falls in trying to protect that and keep it what a lot of people originally bought a lot of those properties for, which was to use them in a, in a more quiet and low-key manner. So with that, Anne, did you have anything additional that you wanted to?
No, I'm just, I'll be happy to take any notes that you want to do.
Perfect. So if we want to start, and we'll try to, we don't necessarily have a super organized fashion about this, but if somebody has a comment, what I will need to have you do is come up and take a step at the microphone. Obviously, we all want to be here only until 8 o'clock tonight. I think everybody's time is, is valuable for that. So if anything we don't get to tonight, we will definitely make sure we're readily available to answer any questions that don't get answered this evening. But with that, if everybody can just keep their comments, you know, concise and where applicable, that would be helpful as well. And if you can state your name also, that'd be helpful.
Titus Ellison.
Great.
So I have two questions. One was mentioned that the single-family home use would still be allowed. Does that mean that if they kept under 900 square foot, you would allow a single-family home if they did the well and septic up there?
Correct.
So it's not a prohibition against single-family homes. They'll still allow it, and they'll be putting wells and septics up there on the Zion Mountain?
Yep, as long as they're under that 900 square foot, so their system...
But they'll probably ask for it, I'm guessing. So then, what I'm concerned about is if you look at that upper portion on Zion, the lower bit that points down, can we zoom in anywhere near the upper Zion or the, where the point, near the, under that? Is there anything in between that? I'm looking at the lower portion of it. They're not showing. The lower highway. So there you go. Here's the lower portion. So the thing is, is the river comes along there, there's a big cliff system, and those ravines come down. I'm concerned about where that lower line is, because that's winter elk habitat. Now, those upper meadows, they sleep on my land there. And all through those meadows, I'm just concerned about how deep that... You see, like, where that T is? And to the right, like, that lower line, that's all that elk winter habitat. You'll see it on the map. But they really count on that. They live there and sleep there. And if that's all people's cabins and they develop that back ravine there, they won't come through no more. And in the winter, they've got, like, a path like a, you would not believe, like, melted into the snow. We're not talking about optional. Like, that is where they cross, every winter, all the time. Those are my comments. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, there, luckily, there's not a ton of properties in that little lower section there. It looks like a handful, but...
Well, you thought there's going to be those, but you're going to let them put single-family homes down all the way down.
No. So if you, if you look a little, so you can see the shaded section, but within that shaded section are actual property boundaries.
So those, like...
Those little rectangles that you see are the only properties that are within that area. We just drew the zoning district around all the section lines.
That's good information. So all we're looking at is those yellow parcels inside.
Those are the actual private parcels in there, so...
But is there a guarantee that they won't issue more parcels throughout the green?
Because the other areas within that are public lands. They're national forests, I think, over there.
And so what happened is, in the late 1900s, for the most part, these were allowed to, if you found a mine or a mining prospect, you were allowed to patent it into private land. That is no longer allowed by the federal government. So whatever patented claims we have are set in stone. You can't do that process anymore.
Right. But that, that one right there, to the right of the T, is an old radio station tower sits right on top of that cliff. If you move your arrow down, to the right, down, down, to the right, to the right, that angled one, that's the top of that cliff, I believe. So they'll have a single-family home on top of that cliff?
So to clarify a little bit, right now, the zoning that they have, they can build a 7,000-square-foot house, single-family home.
On top of that cliff, though, like...
Well, they have to meet building code. They have to come through and get all of the permits still by...
But it can be right on that edge of that cliff.
So it's current zoning allows it. Whether the property would actually be allowed to be used based on grade, access, and infrastructure is a whole different story.
So it might have to be 100 meters back from it.
So all we're talking about here is changing, changing the underlying zoning use, but the actual properties itself, those also have to meet, they have to continue to meet the same regulations they would have to meet right now.
If you put a house on that T and put a house on that mining claim, you completely cut, there's three ravines there. The elk comes straight down to the river. That's what I'm saying. So you might reconsider those, too.
Well, so if we reconsider, if we took those out of backcountry, they would stay zoned ag forestry over there, and then they could build whatever size single-family dwelling they want. So it doesn't change that. What we're doing...
Can you pivot sections while you're doing this?
We can't, no. This, this is not looking at taking away people's availability to build on their property. That's, the idea here is to change the underlying zoning use. It's very likely that their geographical basis of the property is not going to make it buildable all on its own. But that's not what we're doing here. We, we aren't going to go in and say, "This person should be allowed to build on their land, and this person can't."
I see. Well, so that land that's not in the shaded, like, from the highway to the shading?
It remains its current zoning district.
And if that's open space, what's that, like, it was, it used to be open space up to forestry land? Like, my boundary ends, and then it's, what, something? And then your, where your line is was old forestry land? What's in between that land and my land?
Mostly forestry land still.
The ownership is the same. It's the, the ownership of the land remains the same. So any of these private parcels that you see outlined in yellow remain owned by whoever owns them. John Smith maybe owns one right below you, right? That would stay the same. It's just that what he's allowed to do with that piece of property changes with this zoning district. So if you're in this zoning district, your square footage on your single-family home gets limited to 900 square feet instead of no maximum. And now you could also do something smaller, such as a hunting cabin, camp on your land.
So everywhere we're showing forestry land, either in the shaded or not the shaded, if there's not already a yellow parcel, that's a no build?
Well, it's Forest Service land. So whatever Forest Service permits is up to Forest Service. We don't regulate that, but yeah, that's correct. It remains Forest Service land.
Right. Right now, nobody owns the land between me and the cliff.
Correct.
So I'm just wondering, is this going to put cabins between me and the cliff on the cliff? I can't quite decide where the line is, because the map didn't show me.
The lands that are not little yellow parcels are, in that area, are Forest Service. So that remains Forest Service-owned land.
Even though it's not, because where you put your shaded border is not where the Forest Service land borders is.
The shaded border is purely a zoning district.
Okay.
Boundary.
Within the Forest Service land. I'm sorry, within the Forest Service land.
Right. But ownership is not being portrayed by the shaded area. Ownership is only being portrayed by the yellow.
Is there, can you guys do an overlap with posts showing where the Forest Service land overlaps this land?
Well, it's just everything that's not in a yellow box.
But where you have shaded green is Forest Service land, and you have land between the shaded green area and Highway 91 that is not owned by people, but is also not in the shaded area, which is Forest Service land still. So you have Forest Service land outside.
Because we aren't showing the other zone districts on this map. We're purely just showing this new zone district on this map.
Right.
That just remains the other zone district. So ag forestry, I think.
I understand. But this, could you, could you post where the Forest Service districts are in relation to this map later, maybe?
Yeah, I think we're still confused, but perhaps you two can get together after.
Yeah, that's, I'm just worried about the lines and the boundaries of where the lines are. I'm trying to get clarified.
Yeah, yeah. No problem. Okay. Do we have anybody else in the room here that has a comment or a question, or would like to go next? Amy, you'll have to come up to the microphone, please.
Okay, I have two questions. One is, can you fence your property?
It remains the same. I think we have that you can't fence your perimeter because wildlife habitat.
Right. So the site plan review encourages wildlife for masonry. So there is a site plan review. So there is a fencing requirement, but I don't recommend for masonry.
And then, recognize road access. Is that still in place? So my understanding, to build on your land, you have to have either a county road or a Forest Service road. You can't just, just because there's a road there, you can't build on it. Is that true? Is that not true?
So, let me take one.
Yeah, you'll just need a microphone.
I'm so sorry. We're having such, I'm sure it's awful, but I can't do it. I said we're just...
So nothing changes, Amy. We still, you, you still have to prove to us that you have access. So that if you have county road access, you know, that's, that's a given. If you are using a private landowner, including the Forest Service, you may have to, a property owner may have to provide us proof of access, same as, as it's always been.
For those of who don't, you don't know me, my name is God Hennes. I've got parcels all over the county. Basically, let's address Mount Champion and St. Kevin. Okay. One thing that you guys have really overlooked in this whole process is that the only properties in this proposed area are patented mining claims, which means that they demonstrated to the US government that it had economic mineral on it. Okay. Now, without trying to diss Howard, oh, there's really no such thing as a recreational mining claim. These have been held for generations because of their mineral potential, and also the fact that knowing that the country will leave them again. That's something. When I look at, under ag forestry, you have mining conditional approval. Under backcountry, you're precluding mining, and that's a taking. 95% of the value of a lot of these properties are mineral mining. The county assessor insists that the peak of Mount Champion is worth $3,000 an acre, and taxes us extraordinarily on that basis. You can't build on it unless it's a structure designed for extreme climate. Everybody worrying about having houses in the backcountry has never tried to maintain a house in backcountry. Plain and simple, if you've got a building up at altitude, the weather will destroy it within a period of years. And we've seen that all over the county. Mount Champion, you have Mount Champion Mine, which was mined up through the 1920s. My property, the Ozark Group, is about 97 acres that abut the Mount Champion Mine. The vein continues on, and it's been proven to continue on, and there is geophysical evidence that there is an ore body on the Ozark. Yes, it's in the back of beyond, but if you take my right to mind, and just when we see the title of your nice little handout about preserving the environment, that is basically a taking of all the economic value of the property. St. Kevin District was mined up until the 1980s. I've been underground on the St. Kevin, which was owned by Bob Elder. It's now owned by a group that I'm part of. It'll be mined again. And, you know, I'm not trying to be confrontational here tonight. I know you put 10 years of plotting into this, but you're taking people's properties out from underneath them with this move. I may not be the one to sue you guys. I know other people who are plenty ticked off at seeing their mining property that they held for 30-plus years potentially being taken. I've got my hands full. I'm already suing the EPA for $3.8 million on another taking. Okay, and I'm going to have to take that to the Supreme Court. Luckily, I've got a pro bono law firm called the New Civil Liberties Alliance that took my case. You know, this is wrong. You take... You take people's property. And everybody who owns a piece of property, they've got theirs. But if I could take the other guys and put them in for building, that's great. That's not what we're about. That's not what we're about as a country. There's been a fundamental error in this backcountry proposal. Okay, I see no scope. The second that, if we're under backcountry zoning, we go to, say, we want to establish a "Oh, no, this is special, it's backcountry." And it's like an area of critical environmental concern from the federal government, which they use willy-nilly. It's used as a club and it prevents the use of your land. And if the county is going to be taxing us at $3,000 an acre for frickin' barren mountain top, which you get blown off of it 10 months of the year, the only value in that land is for mining or to force us to sell out to a conservation group, which is run as a nonprofit and reduces the tax base of the county. And when you're soaking people $3,000 bucks an acre for mountain top, you're not going, that taxes are going to have to come out of other landowners. And their land assessments and tax bills go up. Am I correct that you're precluding mining? That I see no, no scope for it in your proposal?
Yeah, and I mean, it's a, it's a great point that I don't know that we've necessarily necessarily discussed in detail as far as, I think that a lot of us had it in our minds that the majority of the actual mining and ore body stuff was happening on the east side, which is why we were trying to leave that out of it. So that we weren't taking away any kind of mining rights. And that we didn't see very much of it happening within the Forest Service areas. So that's, so that is something that I actually absolutely think that's a discussion point. Now, if, if, if mining was back as a CUP under the proposed backcountry district, and that portion remained the same, so you still had to do a conditional use permit, you still had to get your licenses from the state and local.
From the state, yeah.
Right, so then, you know, then it would just be a conditional use permit, just as it is right now.
Yes, that probably would be correct. Even though there's an argument that the state is the only regulator of mining. And I'm not going to fight that tonight.
Yeah, I mean, the current zoning says that it's conditional use.
Yeah, and it's going to end up in the Colorado Supreme Court at some point and will let them decide.
Yeah.
For those of you who don't believe mining is never going to come back to this county, we've got a supply chain crisis right now. Just because some ships are backed up. I have been in this business for 40 years. Lake County is going to be very important to the United States surviving. When, not if, but when China goes after Taiwan, they're going to cut off everything. And we're so heavily mineral-dependent on China. You don't want to zone off huge portions of the county. That has to be available to the country. And it will be done in a very sensitive manner, I can assure you. You can't do it otherwise these days. But we really need to preserve mining in these areas because that was proven to be the initial invalid economic use. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else?
How's everybody doing? I'm Jason Kuchma, Sugarloaf Mountain Ranch. So we are definitely in that zone. We just purchased here last year. I believe there was 86 different mine claims on the property. Took about two and a half years to purchase that property. We do have a lodge on the property. And going in a different direction, we have actually entered a program with the Forest Service and the BLM where we are committing about 98% of that property to preservation for the wildlife. And just the beauty of it, we don't plan on developing it at all. It was in the plans prior for the land to be developed. Roads were put in, all kinds of different things. There is a 5,000-square-foot lodge on the property that is a vacation lodge where we provide activities, generally in the wintertime. Summertime some as well. People bring in their four-wheelers and things like that and enjoy the area. I know the off-road use is another thing that's being discussed pretty heavily these days, but that's for another day. But our concerns mainly are, you know, we purchased 1,000 acres. If we want to put a 2,000-square-foot garage next to that 5,000-square-foot house to keep our equipment in, we feel like it's an overreach for us to not be able to do that. Or say, an equipment barn. So that would be the main concern. And my partners, seeing this, we're not too happy. So I'm representing them and myself. It is a big concern for us, especially because we donated so much of that property to wilderness use. Meaning, you know, no motorized, beautiful meadows. We're working with the forestry program to forest the property over 100 years or the next 100 years to keep it from being a place where fires start. And just in general, make it an enjoyable place for people moving forward. So there's some concerns there. We don't want to get to a litigious point where we're, you know, being told, "You can't build a garage under a property next to your home." So those are just some of my concerns. And also wanted to let everyone know that being such a big piece of property put forward to maintaining as a wilderness area is a pretty big deal, so.
So just to clarify on your specific situation, that's not a typical residential use. What you're talking about is what we have in the use code as a commercial vacation lodge use. So that would be a conditional use permit, which is still a conditional use permit in the backcountry zone district in which those single-family residential square footage requirements are not, your conditional use permit can overreach those. So a garage is not a single-family dwelling. Changing the size of your commercial operation would all be subject to conditional use permit, whether it's backcountry zoning or it's current zoning. So this shouldn't impact that for you either way.
Okay.
Right, yes. So Jason, you just need a conditional use permit and you can continue to operate.
Well, we do have one. Sorry, I had to interrupt.
I'm not aware of you having a conditional use permit. But love to talk to you afterwards. But yeah, you can have a conditional use permit. And then you can come in and if you're going to add a structure like that, if you have one, then you have to come back through the permitting process to add something like that. So, but this zoning change doesn't affect you.
Okay.
I'm Matt Davidson, mining claim owner in the Twin Lakes District. I reviewed the GIS overlay and one of the properties, the new zoning only takes a little corner of it. How's that, is it going to, in the final review of this, will that whole parcel be in the new zoning? Or will there be a little notch taken out of the new zone?
So, and what was your unitary?
Matt Davidson.
Matt Davidson. Because I believe we can, we can modify our boundary. Because we don't want to, I don't think we want to create dual zoning.
Yeah, so I think Bryce was going to.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, and Matt, this was one of the one areas that I saw that there was some overlay. We can correct that. Just to let you guys know that this zone district was kind of made section by section, township by township. So that's why it has some broad lines. But yeah, depending on the discussion, you can edit it to be not sort of splitting between two zones.
Okay. The other concern I have is I hope this isn't a green light for the Forest Services to start closing off Forest Service roads. Because in the Twin Lakes District, there's one road up there that accesses most of the private properties. And if they shut that road off, then none of us have access to our property anymore. And I happen to know that that road was not put in by the Forest Service. They assumed authority years after it was actually full-loaded, so. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else in here before I go to the Zoom?
My name is Ken Olson. And I believe the prior three speakers have expressed somewhat, quite different views. But I think Mr. Hannes, with regard to his statement on prohibition of mining in these districts that were significantly, not all composed, mining claims is a valid point. And I don't think under the Colorado Constitution, as I interpret it as a non-attorney spokesman, was that mining is generally allowed by the Colorado Constitution. The point with the gentleman with the, with the backcountry facility answers deep points, and I think that's the consideration. The consideration of the potential. All I've done all my life is lose public roads in Lake County. I've never gained a public road. You can only lose public roads in Lake County. Very much a pummel in history of keeping public roads open. With the help of the county at times, it certainly helps on maintaining public roads. But one of my concerns is that whenever I have a Florida place that says, "We'll not take away all of the current uses allowed." It's not heartwarming. It's kind of like, okay, what are you taking away? Well, it looks to me like what you're attempting to do in this process is allow uses that were not previously available. And to have some use of, let's call it what it is, remote mining claims, that you can do more in your lifetime than simply pay Lake County property taxes forever, generationally. I mean, what, what can you do on a Lake County mining claim? Pay taxes? I applaud your efforts to get to some balance here. Mr. Hannes may believe that he's got a fortune to make in the future on these properties, that's why. Others, which are very important to this community in Lake County as a whole, are commercial uses of these rural areas. And so where it says, "Limit commercial uses and traffic within these remote areas," it will allow that. So I think, I think there is a happy medium to get to. Not pleasing everyone, but not necessarily displeasing everyone also. And allowing those uses, I think are good. And they don't have to be straight mining. And, you know, the respect of that environment in Lake County has come out to me. But also is some commercial value or some personal value of the use of those mining claims to do more than just pay Lake County property taxes generationally. I think there's a balance to be struck. And I applaud your efforts to address some of these items. And good luck to all of us.
We do have several comments on Zoom. I opened up the Zoom all started to show you some of the comments.
Can I kind of go through those actually? As far as the public comments, so that we can go through them one by one?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so a lot of these are volume, volume terms. And I'm sorry, Zoom, that Zoom folks, it's just not perfected quite yet. I'm just going to go back. The very first one I see here is from Taylor. Clarify that this is reduction in buildable square footage and therefore a reduction in possible value of the land. I think that my answer to that is that, and I can let Howard weigh in as a previous assessor as well. I think the value will be, it's interesting. I've had a lot of people concerned that their value is going to go up too much because there's going to be a lot of people who like this type of property that they can now camp or, you know, build the lesser of a single-family dwelling. So I think that's yet, you know, remains to be seen as far as the value of the property. I think that, as Ken kind of alluded to, historically, a lot of times these mining claims have just sat there. And people pay taxes on them and they don't get to do much with them because they don't want to go through the expense of putting in a full, single-family dwelling. So now that they can be used, I would guess that you're going to see more interest in those areas. And obviously, any improvements add to the value. So I think that that's a, you know, then we're going to have the argument that, is that going to raise my taxes then? Well, so it's going to be one or the other. And yeah, again, we go back to how that's going to make, you know, depends on which side of the coin you want to be on. If you want to be on the selling side of the coin, you're going to be psyched that your value is higher. If you're going to be on the taxpayer's side of the thing, then you're going to want your values to stay low. So I think it's, it's a hard question to answer as far as what that's going to do to your future value. Howard, I don't know if you have anything additionally to add to that?
No, just as far as the value. First off, I want to make it clear to everybody in public and in this room that I'm not, I'm not assessor anymore. I was for a long time, but I'm not now. And I don't want to step on the present assessor's toes. I would wish he was here to answer these questions. But I would tell you from my experience how we would handle that. They make their own market. It's like any, any, any other sales in town or wherever they're at. These, we called them recreational mining claims. And yeah, they were mining claims that were situated around the county. And they were being used for recreation. Nobody was mining them. And they were totally recreation claims. And they had, they were, the values were going up. We had one or two sales, then it kept getting more and more and more. And pretty soon, they had a market. And so what did we call them? They're not mining claims like we have up in IM on the east. So we called them recreational mining claims for want of a better word. And like I said, once a house goes on, that'll have to be, that'll have to be valued or a yurt or whatever they put on them, that'll come up with the initial value. But pretty soon, there's going to be more and more and more. Then like, like the system works, they're going to make their own market. And yeah, the values are probably going to go up because they're going to be, people are going to want them. But if for some reason they didn't, then they won't go up. But I imagine that once it gets started, it will progress. Thanks.
Next on here is Charles. I'm just going to guess it's Schwartz. But asking about the 900-square-foot max and how we came about that number we, on a single-family dwellings. And that was one that we debated forever. And, you know, continually did, have done so all the way towards the end of bringing this forward. You know, we keep, we keep landing back to impacts. And if we are going to make it so that more of these claims are usable, And if we are going to make it so that more of these claims are usable, folks can use them, we want to make sure that it's not to the case of a whole bunch of 2,000 square foot houses. So 900 is where we landed. It may seem arbitrary, but there was a lot and lot and lot of debate and discussion over it. And 900 square feet is kind of where we landed as being kind of an average A-frame type cabin or average hunting cabin, which give you a couple bedrooms and a bathroom and a kitchen and kind of takes care of what you need. So that was the idea behind that 900 square foot number. You know, if there is, there are other numbers that people would like to propose us consider and reasoning behind that, we're definitely willing to listen to that. Again, another question about raising the taxes and devaluing the land. Again, I don't, you know, we don't, we in this group don't have anything to do with your taxes. Unfortunately, Colorado's real estate market is raising our taxes pretty significantly. But that's not the intent here. The intent here is not to say, oh, how can we take more money and also devalue your land? Again, in my opinion, I think that it makes the land just as, if not more valuable and usable for the ways that I think many of us live here and would like to see that land used. There's, Patrick also brought in another comment on the square footage size, just that it's quite restrictive. A 1,200 square foot residence creating such an environmental impact shouldn't be reduced to 900 square feet. Rob Lucas, I like the option of being added to allow backcountry cabins less than 600 square feet without water and septic, but a max of 900 square feet seems overly restrictive. Charles, again, as a general rule, regulation as applied to specific property must not create an unreasonable burden on the owner, even if the regulation is reasonably related to a legitimate government interest. If a regulation burdens the use of the land so much that it becomes confiscatory a taking, the regulation would, will be vulnerable to constitutional takings challenge. And he cites some code. Again, the idea here is not at all to devalue or take, doing kind of takings of the property. And we have another question of the 900 versus 1,200 square feet and whether or not there's a reason to have an argument over 300 square feet. Somebody said they read that there will be a $400 fee added to the landowner. What is this for? I have no idea what, where you saw a $400 fee or, there's no additional fees being added?
That's the backcountry structure application fee.
Oh, yeah. So it's like a permit fee, but for a backcountry structure. You would have a permit fee if you built a single-family home as well. And the 180 days limit for, I assume they're talking about camping?
No, 180 for temporary occupancy of backcountry structure.
So that's, the 180-day limit on a backcountry structure is for something that's going to be used for more of a, I'm going to use the term temporary in nature, such as a yurt or a cabin or something that's not built quite to building code. The idea of it is that you're not using it as a full-time residence, and if you are, then you should be building it to building code as a single-family dwelling. So that's the reason behind the 180 days. And that helps to make sure that if any kind of these yurts or systems that are being put in place without full septic systems and things like that are being used accordingly. Inspector fees, inspection fees, what will be the cap on a third-party inspection fee?
I, that depends on what the, that depends on what the inspector will charge them. So backcountry structures require a third-party inspector, and so whatever that inspector will charge them to do the inspection.
And can you discuss further the metric used to determine what property falls into this zone? And I'll let Bryce speak to how we came up with our boundaries.
Yes, essentially trying to incorporate all patented mining claims that aren't in the industrial mining zone. So, and that haven't been transformed into a subdivision or some other since then.
I feel like there might have been a few other people in here that didn't have an opportunity to ask a question. I thought I saw somebody stand up when we went to Zoom. So if there's anybody else in here who would like to have a quick, go ahead, yep, if you can come up to the mic, please.
I'm Larry Alphorn, property owner on the left side of your Zion block. Couple of questions. How can you rezone federal land? I mean, how do you get the right to rezone federal land?
We're not rezoning federal land. Zoning all implies to the part of the owned parcels. We're not rezoning federal land.
Well, all these mining claims are tied together with federal land.
Right. So if there is partial ownership on there, if there's fractional ownership on there, is that what you're saying?
So I know our map gets confusing, right? Because this map shows a bunch of federal land in there. But in some ways, it makes it easier to look at a map and say, this whole section here, any private property in that section is zoned to this. But we don't have anything to do with Forest Service land that's in there also. If we just took properties and colored them, the map would be a crayon mess.
Okay, I already see that there's a new road at the Jenny June Mine, a new mile section of road this summer, up to a yurt on top of the mountain and a new concrete structure going up. Gate at the bottom locked. Now there's a chain across, lock chain across the four-wheeler road, so you can't go enjoy seeing the Jenny June historical site anymore. And it has a monument, historical monument there. Gate's locked. There's going to be a whole lot more of that, isn't there?
The idea behind this is to make it so that's very well-known that that can't happen anymore. But that has, that has happened and happened and happened throughout the years. And unfortunately, the only way that the county knows about people trying to block off public access is for people to come in and let them know that somebody's put a gate up and done that. I honestly hope that this zone district, because we are starting to bring down the size of properties and the size of development happening up there, that the people who are looking to use, utilize those types of properties and going through the proper channels to do so are going to have the understanding that they don't get to block off roads, they're not going to pave our roads, they're not going to go in there and change that situation.
Well, they already are.
No, I know, I understand. We're trying to keep it down.
I'm with you. I'm worried about wildlife habitat, migrations. It's not a good thing. Thank you.
So I think I know what road you're talking about, and I just want to address the specifics of that, which is that the concrete structure that's going up did go through the conditional use permit process. So that's going to be a new 10th Mountain Division hut. And that road they built actually went through the Forest Service process. So that was permitted by the Forest Service, which is, you know, if you don't have prior access, that is an option. You go through the Forest Service permitting process. I think it took about two years to get the permission for that. And there was a bunch of concessions they had to make to the Forest Service, including closure of the road in order to get permission. So it is a one-off case, but that is something that, you know, just to let you know, there is a process behind that particular instance, which they went through permitting.
Well, if people can't go see the history of the Jenny June no more, unless they go to the courthouse and look it up on the map.
Yeah, and it sounds like it was a Forest Service trail, not a road. And they designated it as a trail, and that's why it was allowed to be blocked off, or, I mean, going through the comment, to be closed off. Um, yeah, go ahead.
Is there something you could go over how the roads would work? Like to the mining claims that don't have already existing roads, how's that going?
That'll be up to the property owner if they have to, just as they do right now. They would have to get easements and/or access to their property too.
Does this zoning have anything to do with facilitating or granting more easement, more access to easements? Or is it about structures and not easements?
Yeah, this is, yep, the county doesn't get involved in facilitating easement acquisition. You'd have to go, if it's Forest Service, you have to, individual property owners are going to have to go to Forest Service to get their access. Same with if you're going across somebody else's private property, have to get an easement from them. So this doesn't change any of that. That process would remain the same.
Could anybody give an educated guess on how the roads, like whether the Forest Service would just say, okay, you got a cabin, now you got to walk to it? Like, well, you have a cabin, or are they going to allow most likely?
I mean, we don't know. It would be, I'm sure Forest Service has lots of metrics on which, where it is, what it's crossing, what's happening. Yeah, all of that, somebody would have to go through all of that.
And I can also share, when I share that public land, or so you can see the Forest Service ownership, Forest Service also has designated roadless areas. And so that would be a consideration that they'd be looking into as well right away.
Would you mind that was not motorized, but would you like to stay in that motor?
Correct. And no applications for the roads to be considered unless extreme. Yeah. So I can share that layer as well.
Go ahead, come on up.
Just mainly other questions. Prospect Mountain is an industrial area up here? That's where most of the mining grounds are. On this access, and there's concerns, it's been coming up tonight, all over this county, someone buys a little piece of land, puts a chain across the road, and closes it. What is going to be done about that? You're selling more private properties to be developed, and yet the next person to develop is probably going to be the one who closes the road. This has been an ongoing problem in this county for years. The only way it gets solved is after about 10 years, the county finally gets into court, spends thousands of dollars when that could have been solved before just by identifying all these roads and laying down it. And the city should be involved in it too.
Yeah, we're not creating more parcels, we're just changing the use of them. So that, yes, I agree that some problems that currently exist, this doesn't change those. I don't think it's increasing it necessarily, but I think that you're going to, yes, so it's an issue that the county needs to address as a whole other issue that does relate to this. But it exists, like, we're not creating new land and selling off new land, we're just changing what current property is being zoned as.
As soon as they're sold, the next buyer is going to block the road.
Can I just?
Yeah.
And you're absolutely right, Gemma. And I know the county is working on access. I know Ken's worked on it this whole time at the county too. So a little bit separate issue, but keep in mind that under the current zoning, I think with the development demand that our department gets and the deep pockets that are coming in, that I think it's more prone to happening with the current zoning of people coming in and building the mini mansions of the backcountry and wanting to be very secluded from the community and anyone else. So I think you're going to see that a lot more under the current zoning. That's just my perspective though.
And I could say a little bit is that I'm a Lake County mapper and GIS guy as well. This last summer, I started a bigger project to do a more thorough inventory, working with public works and working with historical documentation to identify those pre-existing roads. Because I do agree that this is an issue that continues to come up. And as Mr. Olson said, you know, you have roads that are being blocked off or the ownership might be contested. So it's a bigger lift, and it's not quite ready yet, but we're trying to produce a thorough inventory, not of just county roads, but also roads that are recognized as public roads. Maybe not necessarily maintained, but they are public roads. I think a good case of that would be the Old Stage Trail. Old Stage Trail was not a recognized or maintained county road, but it was a maintained or a recognized public thoroughfare, and so eventually became a county road again. That's what we're trying to do, is identify those roads so that people can't put in a new road and claim that it was a historical road essentially.
Most of the roads have disappeared in this county.
Well, we try to prevent that from happening.
I mean, I worked there for a long time, same solid, they disappeared.
Any other questions in here or comments? I have a few more on here on Zoom, so I'll go to those quickly. What will be required in place of septic system, composting toilets, question mark, what else? That is going to always fall under Lake County Public Health. So whatever regulations that they have to follow, they have to follow. But they do have alternative variances that one can apply for outside of a standard septic system. Currently, there are variances that would fall under that 180-day or less usage, and then you would apply for a variance with Lake County Public Health of what type of system you would be working on. Our zoning can't address what those regulations are because zoning and health code are two different beasts. A question is, for these properties, is this per 10-acre mining claim, or is there a parcel size in this? I can only build one 900-square-foot cabin on 112 acres. If your whole lot is consolidated into one parcel of 112 acres, then currently, as our backcountry code is written, that would be correct. Unless you were doing a vacation lodge or something to that nature where you would be doing a conditional use permit for something different.
And current code, it wouldn't change, it'd be the same.
Current code, it would also be the same, that it would be one cabin per lot. So if your lot is 112 acres, you would be on one cabin on that property as well. If the metric is based on mining claims and your property does not have any involved in it and sits on the edge of this zone, is it possible to be considered for rezoning outside of the proposed backcountry zone? I don't really know how that. We'll have to investigate that property just a little bit further to see where that would fall in. But ideally, the lines were drawn based on the idea of the areas that were currently and historically used as these kind of remote backcountry. I have a question of, is RV camping okay within the 180-day limit? Yeah, RV camping, it's, yeah.
But it's not 180 days.
It's not 180 days.
Right. So backcountry structures need to have, need to be affixed to the ground. So RV would be camping, 180-day temporary would have to be a backcountry structure.
Yep, and the camping dates are?
No more than 15 consecutive days and no more than 30 in a six-month period.
Okay. So in case Zoom didn't hear that, no more than 15 consecutive days and no more than 30 in a consecutive six, or I'm sorry, in a six-month.
In a six-month period.
Proposal allows for anything under 600 square foot to be built without a septic, and what is the number of those structures you're allotted? And is there stipulation correlated to acreage? Again, it's one per either a single-family dwelling or a backcountry structure. My wife and I have long owned a patented claim in St. Kevin's District. We've always used it for camping for a few weeks in the summer, and because of the cost of fulfilling the current building requirements, we have not built any structure. We would be happy to see the proposed new backcountry zone adopted. As a landowner of, as a new landowner of a property under an existing conservation easement, I specifically investigated the parameters of what was allotted on this property. How does the current zoning proposed, proposed to work with existing conservation easements? And I would assume it works the same as it does currently. We don't change the way we're working with a conservation easement with this new zoning district.
No, that would be exempt from any of the conservation easement portion.
And actually, Commissioner Mudge answered that for her on there as well. And actually, Commissioner Madge answered that for her on there as well. And is a well considered for the 900-square-foot or larger structures? So anything, any of the single-family dwelling units, a septic would be required, and then the well is optional as long as you can demonstrate that your septic can function properly. Do I have any other questions? Comments, things we think, need to think about? Anybody have anything on here that they want to add that I maybe didn't touch on?
No.
It's only 7:13.
Any other questions?
I think Shane would like to speak. Shane's the one.
Okay, Shane, go ahead.
I've lived up there 20 years. I basically go there in the summer, and I've watched that place, you know, go from, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do this. I don't get why you would even propose something like this. It doesn't make much sense, considering with marijuana and the money that's coming into this state. Why you would even go on such a level as putting shacks and outhouses in the best place in Colorado? I, it stumps me. I don't get that at all. I mean, if you need income, open up some of that mining district. You're not gonna get, just because you put this out there, how are you gonna get these people to go to the dump and not put up a shed? So many people can't even get to flatland and build a building. I don't get how you think it's gonna help. You're not gonna make a lot of income. The Eurohacks showed that. I have a few other, basically, are you gonna put a snow load on the houses? The, the shacks you're putting up? I mean, you better, you're putting them in the high country. That just makes sense. And then you have, and here, your wording is that you are the jurisdiction of authority for the outhouses. Who's gonna take care of these in a year like the Eurohacks? Who's to bet? Who's gonna come in and, and be watching this? Who's gonna police this, let alone in a year if you don't get to these places? And they just abandon, and you got who knows living up there? Driving wherever, starting fires. I had a cabin at Timberlake. I put out three fires myself, that you guys don't even know about. People from Denver are idiots, and I live there. But I didn't do that in Denver. And to me, it looks like the first thing that's gonna happen is you're gonna get a bunch of people up there throwing these little buildings up because they're cheap, and that's gonna bring riffraff. I don't think homeless has enough brains to get up that far, but I wouldn't bet on it. So I guess that's basically what I have to say. I just, I think if you need money, put up decent houses. I had the co-permits. You came to me and charged me double when I put in and drive it. These other people do it. Make this place nice. You guys have the best community in Colorado. They're gonna put up shacks. Get out there and dance, do something, make it nice. We have trouble every year. We don't have enough money, we have no money. We've got people stealing from the government and everything. Clean the place up. Place, start out, you've got the best place around. I don't get it. It doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, I'm only up there in the summer. I hate to see it get burned out, and that's pretty much what's gonna happen. Because that's just idiots. People from Denver, out of state, people riding ATVs wherever. I mean, there's gotta be a better way to do this. That's search and rescue. What if they're coming up to the map to save some idiot? And there's something serious going on down there. You got a fire, you have to save it, burn it. You've got some shack, they're up, James is there. You gotta weigh all this out. If this is, I don't think it's a good idea. You've had a lot of better ideas. That's, that's pretty much my opinion.
And I guess just one comment to that is there's absolutely nothing about this that's about making money. I don't think that was the end. And I think that actually, the main passion behind this proposal is that we do think Lake County's one of the best places. And coming from a personal standpoint, I would hate to see it turn into Summit County, which it's on its way to doing. And if, and if all of that land gets to be ravaged by people who have deeper pockets than we do, then that's what'll happen. So totally different perspectives, and I totally understand all of them. And it's good to hear them all come, come in.
You had a good question. I was wondering, do these houses have to have fire access roads? What if there's a fire?
You'll have to come to that microphone to, to speak, sorry.
My name's Shannon Brockman. Do these new post-900-square-foot houses have to have fire road access? What if there is a fire up there?
So they have the same, and, and we have to keep going back to this a little bit. The current zoning, if we do nothing, you own a piece of property up there, you can build a 3,000-square-foot house on the road that exists currently.
I understand that.
And so the fire roads, partial portion of it, or the road portion of it, doesn't change with the zoning.
So you do have to have a fire road. So there's gonna be more road, more traffic? There's gonna be a lot more little houses up there? Because you're making it kind of easier for them to build ones? Because it's gonna be less money?
No, you can't, no, you can't build more roads.
But they have to have a fire access for a fire truck to get up there?
No, they have to have a fire protection plan. It's part of the site plan review, and so part of that is, is the defensible space. So if one of those structures, you know, it's more about, so the, the design guidelines and the site plan review is designed to, to look at this structure as, as fuel. And so there is, they have to provide a fire mitigation plan. Not, we're not anticipating that, that, you know, that, we're actually thinking that a fire truck might not get to them. So they have to come in with a fire protection plan, and that can be a water supply that's currently onsite, as well as building non-combustible, as well as fire mitigation, removing trees, making defensible space. So they have to, all builds in this area have to go through a fire protection site. And it's not, it's not about access. It's about considering this as a fuel source and looking at ways that they're gonna mitigate the impact.
Taking down trees and stuff for fire mitigation?
Yes, some, in some areas, there will be some tree removal, which, you know, on private property, some tree removal around a house is probably a good measure for anything.
I have another one on here. Sorry, some people are getting responded to still. I think it's, I think there is just a comment here. It seems like the 900-square-foot is the main point of contention here. Can we revisit this within reason, something less aggressive? So I think that's all I see on Zoom at the moment. Any other in-person public comment or questions?
There's a question about whether they can have a trailer or Nancy. You see that one?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Can you have a trailer instead of a yurt or a cabin? Any backcountry structure has to be affixed to the property. So any kind of trailer or RV would be considered camping, and that's where your camping regulations would then fall into place.
I have one more comment.
Shane, yep.
Yeah, thank you. I wondered, I don't get the, you have the pet-up animal references? I cannot for the life of me figure, how are you gonna fit that into this with its rules and stuff? I, I looked at it from every way I can. I don't see that it's even legal. I think you need to really reconsider that, the whole thing and what it is about. Who's gonna police that? I mean, that's a, I believe it's federal animal references. How are you gonna deal with that? I think it should be exempt. Whatever part of that is should definitely be exempt. That's putting people right in there where you can't even go grab a boulder or anything with your hands, unless you're standing on the road and stuff. That's, that's just a really good place for hunting, and it's gonna ruin it.
Shane, this, this proposal doesn't affect that, that, that reference you're talking about?
The green that's right in that, right in that area, right around the, right for the public board.
Right, but again, this zoning only applies to the, the private properties within that shaded area, not any of the public lands within that area.
I don't know, I don't know if you agree with it, that you see what it is. It's basically private, public, federal, you know, courts all mishmashed together. I don't know, at least consider it, because it's, 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 it's right in the middle. In my area, you know, the, the legs are fire, that area.
Yeah, and you can.
It's a state land trust. It's not, it's not going to be affected by this zoning. So existing things like Sugarloaf Mountain and the Lodge, federal properties, this zoning is not going to impact those. So situations like that, that are existing or that are owned or in trust, conservation easements, none of those kind of things are going to be impacted by this zoning.
Okay, that's what you said. I just wanted to get on record about that, and then who's gonna police? When you, are you able to live in your house while you build it for the 180 days? And then go home one day and come back another 180? And then two years later, give it up? And you've had two years in a house with no permit or nothing? Are you gonna let people live in the buildings when they're working on them? Do they need a C.O.?
Yeah. So single, single-family homes will get a certificate of occupancy. Backcountry structures will get a certificate of completion. The 180 days is actually monitored by Public Health because they're, the 180 days aligns with the variance possibility through Public Health. It's also included on their deed, and they record something of record that the property is not to be occupied more than 180 days. So every subsequent owner is also held to that standard. And Public Health does monitor the privy systems. They have a method by which they go out in the field and make sure that they're abiding by their variance that's been granted and, and making sure that they're properly comped. And so there is a methodology that is supported in this process by Public Health.
Planning and zoning, does anything to do with the building of these houses? They're in the stages to go out and look down. You ought to have search and rescue, a fire department go away to these places before they let people move in, because there's gonna be issues. And they would be the best people to tell you that, but do they?
So we will have, oh, I'm sorry.
Can't hardly go out and look at something and tell if it's safe or not.
So we will have third-party inspectors and our regular inspector on, on single-family homes. Actually, that'll be, we'll, we'll, I'm not sure that our regular inspector will be going in these areas. However, we want, anyone that wants to come in and inspect these structures has to show the same qualification as our current building inspector. So the code calls for them to have to come in and be approved by the building official in order to do the, the inspections that are required on both the backcountry structures and the single-family homes.
And then that's a case-by-case basis on the building inspection? What you guys deem worthy is what you guys are gonna commit to?
No, there's, there are standards and guidelines for both. The, obviously, single-family homes are the IRC code, and the backcountry structures are the zoning code.
Yeah, I was reading those. They don't look like UBC at all.
We're not under the UBC, we're under the IRC.
I'm sorry. Don't look like those at all. You know, it's, it gotta be safe, right? That's the whole idea, is giving people a safe place to stay in. And an outhouse, it's not abandoned or leased. I mean, give me a year or two, they'll be needing service and stuff. It's just stuff that's gotta be considered. Know what's gonna happen when it gets to that point, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Shane.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Do I have anybody else in here that wants to speak or add anything? And I don't see any further on Zoom. If there are no other questions, I just want to reiterate again that we want to keep this open and line of communications open and continue to hear and field any questions that may be out there and/or input as we're trying to come to the final stages of proposing this at public hearing in January. If anybody has any questions, please, please, please reach out to Anne over at the county, and she can gather the information from any public sources and get answers and/or get your information and comments to us for part of the process. We really appreciate everybody coming tonight and being a part of public input into what happens in our community.
And being cordial.
And being cordial, yeah, thank you for being so polite. It was nice. Have a good evening, thank you very much.
You handled the.